This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I would like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, December 13th. Roll call, please. President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
There.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Flugie.
Here.
And trustee service.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda, I need a motion to approve.
Move the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Number five, action on the open minutes from November 15th, 2022, and open and closed minutes from November 22, 2022. Motion approved.
I have one correction on the November 22nd meeting minutes. On the top of page 14, Jay had recused himself from an agenda item, and then it was listed as an aye in the box below.
And that's corrected.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Okay. All those in favor say aye with that correction.
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Must be limited to items not on the agenda, must state your name and address, you're limited to five minutes, the board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody from the public who would like to make any comments on items not on the agenda? Anybody who would like to make comments on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on, thank you. Number seven, presentation and dedication for Corky Byro. If a lot of people don't know, Corky Byro was a long-serving member of our Police and Fire Commission. He was very important in the village receiving our first ambulance, which was given, paid for, and donated by Fort Howard by Corky. And we have a plaque here because we are going to be dedicating a bench in our Public Safety Hall to Corky. So I'll bring this down, and Captain Groll and Ann, would you come up?
In memory of Charles Corky Byro. Corky is remembered for his service to the village of Ashwabanam and his dedication to the Public Safety Department. His 46 years of service made a positive and memorable impact on the entire Ashwabanam community. On behalf of Public Safety, we'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you, he would be very proud, very, very proud.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything? Would you like to say anything? We have Corky's son here, and I didn't know if he wanted to talk, or Corky was very, very important to our Public Safety Department, so Ann and I struggled to find what we could do that would honor Corky in the best way possible, so this is what we did.
Yeah, the only thing I will remember from those times was that my father was so deeply involved in the village and in the Rescue Squad and Fire Protection Committee and all that stuff that he really wasn't home, as much as I would wish he'd been. And I remember going to Detroit with him and my mother and my sister to get that first Rescue Squad. If I recall, Green Bay annexed Fort Howard, and my dad went over there and managed to coax a Rescue Squad or two out of them as part of the deal. So, anyway, you know, love my dad, fantastic man, glad you guys are doing this, thank you.
What I would like to add to that, too, that a lot of people don't, I believe the ambulance we had before this was like a station wagon.
Yep.
And there was, at one time, there was an accident on the corner of Hanson and Oneida, and they actually had to put part of the apparatus that you put the person on into somebody else's truck because they had to lay the lady down in the back of the ambulance because it wouldn't fit in there with her leg up in the air. So it was really important for us to get that ambulance, and they did a beautiful job on doing a laser cutout of the ambulance, so it will hang on the wall in the Public Safety, and I'll let you talk.
I just want to say that Corky would just be so honored and very, very proud.
Thank you. Okay, now, written communications or announcements? I have none. Okay, we'll move on. Number nine, the action on the consent agenda, 9A budgeted expenditures, 9B general fund revenue and expenditure reports, 2022 year-to-date, 9C investment report, and 9D department report. Anybody want to pull any, or?
I just had a couple of questions on the general fund revenue report and expenditure report. There were three items that were over budget, there was a general government transit system and a garbage collection, they were all like right around $50,000 over budget, and I'm just wondering why.
So the transit, this year, we had a large refund, and we typically put the refunds in the expenditure account, but I moved that to its own revenue account, so the expenditures will look like they're over budget, but there's actually, the net will be a surplus to the budget there. Received about $192,000 refund, so.
Okay, and how about the, there was a garbage collection one and a general government one?
Garbage collection could be, did we buy garbage?
We did.
We bought some garbage cans, but also, that's also a time allocation in Public Works, so sometimes during budget, we try to track things a certain way, and maybe there's a little bit of variance, so I can get back to you, I don't know offhand exactly what that might be, but it's probably more an allocation between time and resources and potentially, it could be vehicle maintenance, if we had some maintenance repair on some of those vehicles. But Public Works as a whole is doing, kind of at budget as a whole, but sometimes those individual departments will vary year-over-year based on projects in other areas. But I can follow up with you.
Okay.
Exactly, tell.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, or I need a motion to approve?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Number 10, action items, 10A, action on temporary liquor license extension at Titletown Plaza. Chris?
This is an event that they had last year, the only difference this year is that they added a day before and a day later, so they wanted December 30th, 2022, through January 2nd, 2023, and I believe, I don't see anyone online from the Packer organization. Is there anyone online to answer any questions?
They were here at the Public Works meeting, and they said it's because they're doing the New Year's thing, and they also have a Packer game on the first.
Correct.
So they just extended it and covered both of those.
We also checked on the safety of it, and they had no issues last year with it, so it passed the Public Works and Protection Committee. If there's no other questions, I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the temporary liquor license extension at Titletown Plaza. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, thank you. 10B, action regarding requested site plan review for the bar concession stand, 732 Mike McCarthy Way, parcel VA-54-10. Aaron?
All right, I'll just bring the site plan up here. So this concession stand is for the bar, it's intended to serve as a physical location for purposes of their liquor license. Prior to the concession stand, the liquor license was addressed to the former Bertrand Hydraulic Building, which was further east of Mike McCarthy Way a little bit. That building was raised, as it was in pretty tough shape. One unique item of the bar itself is that the bar is within the city of Green Bay, but the parking lots upon which they host the tents for Packer Games and other RESH or Lambo events is actually within the village of Ashwabanam. Under state liquor law, there is a requirement to have a structure under which you can store receipts and be secured. The concession stand as proposed would meet that requirement. It has gone through both Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission. Exterior materials are meant to be a LP SmartSide-type material with similar coloration to the bar, which is allowable under our Site Plan Review requirements. In terms of the discussion at Site Plan and Plan Commission, there was quite a bit of discussion regarding a condition of approval on a 20-foot separation distance between the concession stand and the tents. Further research on that condition of approval indicated that that just, it actually wasn't needed because this will meet the four exception criteria within the International Fire Code 2015 version. So I did attach a copy of that fire code in there for your reference. In discussions with Ashwabanam Public Safety, they did request a condition be added, that there be no cooking or food warming within the concession stand, which in discussions with the ownership group at the bar, they're fine with. Staff recommendation is to approve with that condition regarding no food cooking or warming, as was recommended for approval also by Site Plan and Plan Commission. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, otherwise representative of the bar is also in the audience.
Does anybody have any questions? I know this went through committee.
That went through the site plan and the Public Works Committee that are both on. We had no problem, it is on a concrete slab, so it is a permanent structure, it's pretty basic, it's not heated, all they got in there is coolers and canned beer, so there's really, they made, like Aaron said, it met all the rules and regulations that are used for serving liquor and beer at these places, so if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, is that with the condition of no food cooking or warming? Gary?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the requested site plan for the bar concession stand with condition of no food.
Staff conditions.
Yeah, with staff conditions, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. 10C, action regarding requested site plan review for Merge Urban Development, Commonplace Building Number Two at 676 Mike McCarthy Way, parcels VA-55 and VA-55-A. Aaron?
All right, this is requested site plan for the Merge, for Merge Urban Development, the Commonplace Building Two. Phase one of the Commonplace is currently under construction on Mike McCarthy Way, it is a five-story building, phase two will also be a five-story building. Phase two will have 91 apartment units with first-floor restaurant commercial use, with a couple of the apartments also on the first floor. Also on the first floor, you have a lobby, bike storage, trash room, basically mechanicals generally associated with your apartment-type buildings. Proposed project does include a walkway that you can see right here with an extension to the north to the future Green Bay Legends District. So the intent was to create a pedestrian way through the development to the north to provide for that pedestrian connection. Proposed building is within the sports entertainment zoning district, the proposed uses do meet the requirements within that zoning district. Proposed height of the building is about 69 feet, which again is certainly within our height district of 120 feet in this area, but because it is over 50 feet, it does require basically a permit from the Green Bay Austin Strawville International Airport Director. Stormwater management will be handled through a buy-in to the Ashland Pond for stormwater quality. Stormwater quantity will be handled onsite through an underground storage system. In terms of parking, we had quite a bit of discussion at Site Plan Review Committee and at Plan Commission regarding the amount of parking provided. We had discussions with the developer on that since both meetings. What they would like to do, and I believe it would be appropriate, is to, since there is no defined restaurant use yet, they're not sure what type of restaurant use that will have, and how much traffic that will generate, what time of day it'll typically be generated, as well as getting a feel for the Odyssey Climbing Gym usage in terms of their parking needs, to hold off on any additional parking requirement until they have an idea of how it all kind of works together. If at some point in the future, there is a need to look at additional parking, Merge has provided, or discussed, the option to purchase or acquire additional land to the east that is also owned by the Community Development Authority, which they currently have a planning option on as it currently stands. In terms of, couple renderings, run through those here quickly. First floor, floor plate, floors two through five, floor plates. Exterior materials, in the staff report does mention the requirement for a three-foot masonry wainscot on the first floor. This actually is a revised rendering, the first floor now is entirely a masonry product, so it has been changed, as well as then you see the metal paneling with concealed fasteners on the upper floors. For the renderings, this of course is Mike McCarthy Way right here, this would be the green space and the walkway to the Odyssey Climbing Gym and to the north to the Legends District. This is the back of the building, you do see bike racks on that walkway, green space, and this of course would be the parking area to the north. In terms of staff conditions, I do want to mention for most of these staff conditions, the developer has been working on these diligently since the Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission, and they have submitted, as I mentioned, the revisions, so some of these are already met, but I just want to list all of them for the record. First one, as the building is greater than 50 feet tall and with an airport zoning district C, applicant must obtain an application for height permit and approval from the Green Bay Austin Strawville Airport Director. Use of fully concealed fasteners for wall panels. Three-foot masonry wainscot from finished elevation is required for metal panels on the first floor, which I mentioned they've already addressed. Screen any new rooftop or ground mounted mechanically units visible from the property boundaries or public right-of-way. Extension of the pedestrian way to the north through the parking lot to the future Green Bay Legends District, Tony Cannadale Run. A combination certified survey map will need to be prepared and recorded to remove the property line between parcels VA-55 and VA-55-A. The catch-all condition to meet all applicable requirements of the Ashwabanam Site Plan Review, 172-200, and all other applicable village ordinances. From engineering, review the as-built drawings to try utilizing existing sanitary water and storm sewer laterals. Submit the final stormwater plan of underground storage calcs and sizing details for review. The note regarding the buy-in to the Ashland Pond to meet water quality requirements is $11,300 per impervious acre. Include anticipated costs in the updated stormwater plan. From Public Safety, please contact Public Safety during construction to verify the location of the Knox Box. Please coordinate with Public Safety Department regarding fire lane marking requirements. Please refer to IFC 2015 for hydrant requirements to determine if additional private hydrants are required onsite. Please coordinate with the Public Safety Department the witnessing of acceptance testing for all fire protection systems, sprinkler, private hydrant, fire alarm, et cetera. And last but certainly not least, forestry, preliminary planting schedule submitted with application, species selection is excellent, submittal indicates that a final landscaping plan will be submitted at a later date. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, otherwise we do have a number of the design team, development team online, as well as Patrick Skolecki of Grave is here in the audience as well representing the development team.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a few questions. I guess the first one, you had mentioned the parking part of it, and there's the restaurant on the west end of the building, and then there's a commercial space adjacent to that, is that correct, Aaron?
That is correct.
So we really don't know what's going in either one of those at this point, so we're going to wait and address parking at that time. I just want to make sure that we can address that in the future and make sure that they are held responsible for that, so we don't have any issues, so I guess that would my question for Patrick with the, is he here? You were stuck behind. If our developers agreement would address that, or if we could put that in to make sure that in the future, if we get a restaurant where things are going to just generate a lot of parking, we're going to have, I'd like to stand on to require additional parking in that area.
Sure, we can include something like that.
And also, I can address that as well, they did submit a revised parking plan that also lays out that request or that proposal, that should they need additional parking, that at that point they would negotiate with the village for those additional two parcels of land.
On the east end, correct?
Correct, yep. So under our parking requirements for this district, a parking plan is required to be submitted, so that has been addressed.
Okay, but still, if they're in, they have the building up, we still have a leg to stand on in the future to say, okay, we need to add this many parking spaces to open your restaurant or to put in that commercial space, that would be covered.
They've addressed it through the parking plan?
Yeah.
So really, it's incumbent upon them to look at that and say, in order for our business to succeed, we need to add X number of parking stalls. So really, the way our code works is it lays it back at the feet of the developer to say, yes, we need additional parking stalls or we don't. Now, if we as the village say, oh wow, this isn't working out, we need additional parking stalls for this to work, at that point, we certainly can enter negotiations with them for those two parcels to say, look, you guys really need to take a look at this because it's just not working out right now.
So our ordinance would not require them to do that, we don't have anything in our ordinance that would say, okay, you put a restaurant in, this is how many spaces you would need to put into accommodate that restaurant.
Not within this zoning district, no.
So that's my concern, I guess, that if we don't have, it doesn't sound like we really have a leg to stand on then unless we put it in the developers agreement.
If there's concerns about additional parking in there, we can add a provision, there can be negotiations regarding a second amendment to the developers agreement regarding those parking issues. After that, we can always come back to the board and address more concerns regarding that.
Okay.
We can add that provision in.
Okay, that would be great. And then the pathway that starts from Mike McCarthy and then goes out to the north towards Tony Cannadale Drive, I just want to double-check that that is on private property, correct? That it's not, village is not in village easement or anything through there, that's private property.
That is correct.
So do we have any guarantee or anything that says that at some point in time, they can't decide to close that off?
There's not at this point.
Could we put, again, something in that would require that access to be continued into the future so that we have that path and that access available to people going to the north?
Well, certainly something we could approach the developer to discuss. If there's concerns from the board regarding that specific issue, we can ask, request a discussion on that, to add additional provisions.
Yeah.
See anything, yeah.
Aaron, how wide was that path that they're talking about? This is more than a sidewalk, is it?
It's much wider than a sidewalk, yes.
It is much wider.
And, you know, and snow removal for that during the winter months, too, making sure that that occurs, because that's probably time when it'll be busy with the Packer Games and a lot of things going on up there, so, yeah, making sure that occurs on that pathway so we have access and the residents have access through there, I think is important.
I don't know if we can require that on private property. That I don't know.
Well, if it's a public use, I don't know, I guess it's something, again, to check into, they don't have a path and then it's not accessible three, four months of the year, you know? And then the other thing on the path is to provide a curb cut coming off of Mike McCarthy so people can access that from Mike McCarthy, whether wheelchair, stroller, whatever, just a way that they can access that path system and get into it, because right now, anybody getting into that, if they were in a wheelchair or on a bicycle, they would have to go down to one of the two driveways, and then maybe get on the sidewalk and then find their way through, so I think it would be important to have a curb cut accessing where that path is going to continue or where it goes through, just to make it easier to find and easier for people to get into it.
I think from a staff's perspective on the curb cut issue, we just want to make sure that we're following proper design, I think we ran into that problem or that challenge with Alden Station and the trail coming around the Ashwabanamay Trail with a curb cut without destination across the street, so we just want to make sure that whatever pathway we're creating, that accessible pathway is fully accessible, both from an egress-ingress standpoint on both sides of the street, so, you know, there might not be a logical crossing until an intersection to get to that accessible pathway, we'll just want to be mindful of that when we lay out the design.
Absolutely, I mean, you want to have it safe, I mean, there's one on Bay Area Court that goes towards Pilgrim Way, same thing, if that wasn't there, then everybody would go to the driveway of the gentleman that lives next to it, so just again, to make it easier for people to access and get in there, and I, you know, I see what you're saying, you know, having somewhere to go, but also you want to be able to get into the system and be able to move safely through it. I think that was it.
The plan board had a pretty long discussion on that parking with three of us, I believe, that are on that plan board committee, so that will be addressed when they figure out what they're going to do with the vacant streets on the first floor, to find out how much parking they're going to need, so. The only comment I had, and I want to compliment the design team, I think it's one of the better designs we've ever seen in front of the village here, I know a lot of people bring a lot of nice stuff. This one here, if you want to take, and it's a shame the audience can't see that, but some of the drawings they do here, you know what color it is, they do a very good job on doing that, and I commend this company for bringing this in front of us, and there's no doubts on what it's going to look like, it is going to be Mary Kardowski's third Wau Building in the village. So that's my only comment.
Falamak does a beautiful job in designing, so she's online, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you so much.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the ordinance, or not the ordinance, but the Commonplace Building under the development agreement that will be presented to them.
I'll second.
Is that with staff conditions?
No, it's staff conditions, yes.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan for Merge Urban Development, the Commonplace Building Number Two. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Okay, 10D, consider or discuss act on a request to install a streetlight on Blue Ridge Drive between Ori Lane and Marley Lane. Okay, before we have discussion on this, Joel, from my point of view, I just wanted to say that I believe that the reason why we probably don't have a streetlight mid-block on this street is because the people mid-block, we don't typically put streetlights. on this street is because the people mid-block, we don't typically put streetlights, and the people on that block where it would go have not wanted it. So I went out and talked to the residents over there. They are not in favor of the streetlight. So this would become a little bit of a different precedence if we just decided to put one in because the people really don't want it. So saying that, I will let Joel go ahead and present.
For the, probably the fourth time, I think we've tackled this particular item. So just as a recap, again, at the last village board meeting, it was directed to staff to hold a public informational meeting with the area residents along with forward this back or send this back to the Public Works and Protection Committee for review and ultimate recommendation. So staff did coordinate a public informational meeting with the residents on both the north and south side of Blue Ridge Drive between Ori Lane and Marley Lane. We did not get a substantial turnout from the residents. We had, I believe, five, four different households, five people actually attend the meeting. I will echo Mary's sentiments that although everyone has probably varying degrees of opposition to the streetlight, from pretty much I don't really care to, I'm adamantly opposed to having a streetlight located mid-block on the street, we did not find any resident per se within a logical location for a mid-block streetlight that was openly willing to say, yes, I want it there. We had a spouse, a couple at 1192, I think it was more the husband was probably okay with the idea, wasn't necessarily sold that, yes, I want it there, but I believe his spouse was probably more opposed to it. So happy wife, happy life kind of thing, and kind of kept some quiet from that standpoint. The residents on the south side of the road primarily or principally between 1197 and 1189 are adamantly opposed to the additional streetlight. As Mary had mentioned, we did not make, staff make direct contact with the resident at 1184, but Mary did on Monday, following our staff meeting, and indicated that they were not in favor of it. Again, just as a recap, the map that's on the screen and included in your packet are the easements for WPS utilities. In order for WPS to extend a light, obviously, power would need to be extended to that location. There are two side lot easements, one on the south side of the street, one on the north side, indicated by the yellow line. In an ideal world, if you were going to locate a streetlight, you would locate it in close proximity to one of those two easements so that you can extend power. If you were to move the streetlight east or west along Blue Ridge, we would need to extend power from the easement to the right-of-way and then directionally drill the power along the right-of-way to wherever that pole location would be. If there are too many conflicts within the right-of-way, an additional easement may need to be required between two yards in order to accomplish that. And in that case, we would need to get permission from those property owners to acquire the easement. So with that, that was, that same information was presented to the committee at Public Works and Protection, at which point, Public Works and Protection did recommend approval of the streetlight location with the notation that this would obviously see its final day in court, if you will, at the village board level for final discussion and determination. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you have, and it's really ultimately up to the board to decide.
I expressed my support of it earlier, and, you know, for the reasons of safety and things like that. I understand the pushback against it, I think it's human nature. I just wish people would, I think a lot of these concern about flashing into their windows and things like that are, don't have a lot of merit to them. First of all, I got to disagree with you, Mary, that we don't put streetlights in the middle of our blocks. I think this is rare that we don't have one in the middle of the block.
No, we don't put streetlights in the middle of the block when people are opposed to having them in their yard.
Okay, that's different, okay.
Yes, yes. And I did bring that up, Chris, to the people. I said, if you drive by any streetlights, the newer ones especially, and look at them, they don't shine into the windows, they don't shine back, you know, 30 feet. So I did encourage them to do that, driving around and looking at them, but, yeah, they were not in favor of it going in their yard.
Okay. And I know there's comments made, you know, I've been there 25 years, 30 years, 40 years, and we haven't needed one to this point. I look at it as that place, that area is getting busier and busier and busier, and we got people are going to live there for the next 15, 25, 30, 40 years. I drive up and down that street all the time, especially lately, since this came up. It is dark, it is not safe. But having said that, I don't think I have the right to force that on to the citizens that live on that street, so. I'm going to make a motion to deny the request to install that light on that block.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to bring up the, and I think, Chris, like you pointed out, the people just absolutely don't want it. It's not up to us to push it onto them. I don't think any of us can discount the safety factor, we get it, but people just absolutely don't want it, so it's not, to me, it's up to the people that are living in that neighborhood to be worrying about their safety. I have actually encouraged maybe a neighborhood watch and to be discussing lights, and they do have lights on quite often, but maybe to have better lighting in the neighborhood because it is so dark. The other point is, that I want to make is, I did some, I went through my two wards today and drove through them. I found 23 occurrences where there was not a mid-block light. So if one person on that block would say, no, I want a light there, and you do the math, it could get rather expensive for the village to be putting up all these mid-blocks. And I just did my wards, you could very easily tell which were the newer streets, because then there were mid-block ones, but the older sections, there wasn't. So there was 23 occurrences where I found that, yeah, there probably should be a mid-block one there, but there is not. So yes, I echo your sentiments, Chris, that, yeah, there's safety merits and all that, but people absolutely don't want it. I just feel we need to do what the people want us to do.
You know, Jay, it's just the opposite in my area. We all have long blocks. A block is consists of, I don't know the number, but a normal block, you'd have one on each end. We have long blocks. That's where the mid-light comes in. But regardless, I don't need to talk about that anymore. I just want to bring up once, one topic here. People realize that we have streetlights. People don't realize who pays for them. The village pays for that. And it's funny that this number of $14.35 is the number it costs per streetlight. So you start adding up the number of streetlights we've got in this village, and I think Grave could tell you how much we pay for light in this village.
Our streetlight budget is $500,000.
Okay, so that's just another perk you got in this village here.
And that was, that's another concern that I have, but if we open this up, you're going to add to that $500,000 quite quickly. And Gary, if I recall, when this very first came up, I think you pointed that out. When this first came up to the board, I think you pointed out, wait a minute, we put it in here, now we got to put it in.
Yeah, yeah, it can create some more problems, but hey, it's driven by the people.
Right.
You know, that's where it ends.
I would encourage people, if they're going to walk down streets that don't have a mid-block light, wear a safety vest. Wear, you know, I see people running, they have the X's with the lights flashing, they have lights on their hats, stuff like that. I would encourage that if they're going down streets that are dark, so.
I'd go one block over and go down a street that has a mid-light. Be done with the safety.
There you go. Okay.
I just have a couple of comments. You're right, Mary, it is an individual responsibility as well. You should wear, I know the public safety department is now, heavy vest, you can buy from them for $5, so I would encourage people to get a nice yellow vest that reflects. Also, simply carrying a flashlight with you is a big deal. But on the other hand, the village of Ashwabanon is responsible, what I look at as my job is the protection of people, property, and everything else. And lighting, yeah, it's expensive. Lighting in a community can make our safety so much better. We're responsible for keeping our people safe. And having dark streets adds to a lot of crashes and a lot of deaths of pedestrians. I had sent something to Joel, but the Federal Highway Administration just did a study, it just was completed in April of this year. And we have some really grim statistics right now in regard to our pedestrians moving throughout the nation. The numbers of fatalities went up since 2009 from 64,000 to 75,000. And 76% of these pedestrian fatalities occurred during darkness. And it's our most vulnerable users that are getting hit and getting hit, getting hurt, is our children and our seniors. And I understand, you know, where the neighborhood's coming from, but as a community, it's our responsibility, again, to take care of our people. And, you know, during the evening hours, people are three to seven times more likely to die during the daytime hours when they're out on our streets. And by simply placing lights in an area, we can reduce the crash modification factor, so how often a crash will occur, from anywhere between 42 and 81%. So I think we really need to think about this. I mean, we keep saying we don't force them on people, that's our policy. We want someone to be able to say, yeah, we'll do it, we'll put that in our roadway, which is public right-of-way. If we really need it there, we have the right to put it there, and I think we really need to think about that, and we need to look at our policy and how we're doing that, because someone's going to get hurt out there, and we need to protect our people. So that's my thing with it. We need to relook at the policy maybe, and, you know, if they need to go in, they need to go in. And like I think Chris said, this is a very busy area, and it's going to get more busy because of the Title Town area right there. There's a lot of people are going to move through there. And it's another safety factor, not only so someone doesn't get hit, but for people to feel safe and comfortable out there, so they can see other people around them, they can see things going on around them. Lighting makes a big deal on that too, especially with women wanting to go out there and walk. Having lighting makes it a lot safer for them. So we need to revisit, I think, and look at our policy and decide how we want to go forth with it.
One of the things I will say is, one of the gentlemen that I talked with yesterday, his living, he worked in risk management. So he said to me for 40 years, and he said, Mary, I understand the whole safety thing, I did risk management for, you know, what could happen and this and that. He said, I have lived here for 40 years, nobody's ever been hit on this street, there's never been any crashes, and he said, I already have all of the lighting that is coming from Title Town, and I just don't feel that we need a light. So I'm just saying, I'm just repeating the things that were said to me. I told the people that I would bring those items forward. And for me, it is precedence that we have, and I will not vote to put a light there.
There's no lighting coming from Title Town on that street, not, in fact, it's worse, I think, because you have the lighting in the background, and if you're, you drive up that street, you got the lighting in the background, and I think that even makes it appear darker closer up.
It is dark. I've driven it. You know, I think this whole safety deal, it starts out with the individual, and I'm sure the safety department, which I don't see anybody here, if they wear the proper clothing, at least we got to start them doing it right. I have too many people walking in my neighborhood that have dark clothes on, and what the hell are you going to see? A dark subject walking around, and it's at the last second that you see it. So there's, and you being the bicycle expert, you wear reflective clothing riding the bikes, am I correct?
I absolutely do, yes. Yep, yep. I mean, it is an individual responsibility, Gary, totally, but a lot of people won't do it. Like you said, they'll be out in dark clothes at night. Either they, they don't think about it, they don't know, whatever. So by us creating an environment that's better and more visible, helps take away some of that for people that just aren't going to go there, so.
They'll think about it when a big bumper hits them.
I know, I know. Unfortunately, they're the ones that are going to take the brunt of it.
Okay, is there any more discussion? We do have a motion and a second to deny the light on Blue Ridge Drive. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, number 10E, recommendation to village board for Ashwabamay River Trail Bridge Project.
Thanks, Mary. Bids were opened about two weeks ago for the Ashwabamay River Trail project. Basically, it is building the bridge and extending it into Ashwabamay Park. Low bidder, excuse me, was Michael's Foundations, which is a division of Michael's Construction in the amount of $2,082,000. There were four bids that were received, and Michael's Foundations was the low bidder. Michael's has a track record, they've recently done the Little Shookal Kana, Dave and Rita Nelson, bridge crossing there, as well as a number of other DOT-type of bridge projects, so they certainly have the experience to do this. I have Pat Skalecki. Pat is with Grave, he's here to answer any questions regarding the bridge, the construction, the plans, design, or the bid project itself. Otherwise, what we are looking to do tonight, if, moving forward, is to get approval for Michael's Foundations to be the contractor, so we can start getting the paperwork ready and get them out there in January to drive the pilings.
Are there any questions on this? Like he said, we do have Pat Skalecki from Grave in the audience.
This item went through park board and with very little questions or issues with it, and Michael seems more than up to the, or more than up to the job. And it's going to be an exciting project that's, all the monies are in place, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, the, I don't know where this is here. Approve the award, the project to the Michael's Foundation.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of awarding the Michael's Foundations for the Ashwabamay River Bridge Project of $2,082,000. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Action on village agenda and minutes software upgrade. Jeremy?
So the village is looking at upgrading the agenda and minutes software program. We currently are using a product called MinuteTrack or IQM2, and over the years, that product has actually been bought out by several companies and is currently owned and maintained by Granicus. While doing some updates last year on the trusty's iPads, we know that the We Govern app is no longer available on the App Store. And after discussions with Granicus' support, we were told that that app will never come back to that store due to some security concerns and requirements that Apple is requiring of that. We also found out that IQM2 is, although it's being supported, there's no new features that are going to be added to that software program. So it's kind of at a, they're actually sunsetting that program here in a couple of years. So we're looking at moving to another program. Granicus actually has two different programs, Peak and Legistar, that are currently supported, receiving updates. They also have an app called Legislate that's in the App Store that works out really well. Staff demoed both softwares, and I think we're comfortable moving forward with Peak. We actually have some staff members that have used Peak at their previous employment, so hopefully that training should be fairly easy. The cost is actually the same as what we're currently paying for MinuteTrack right now. The only item that's on the agenda right now is just basically for migration of that data from IQM2 to that Peak software. And this was tentatively pledged as a project through the ARPA funding.
Any questions?
I just have a few questions, I asked Jeremy about this, but one of the questions I had is the list of items to be migrated. migrated. I think it's on page, page 175. I was concerned about some of the stuff that maybe is not going to be migrated over, like the agenda forms and the attached information. So Jeremy, if you could maybe address that and how you look at taking care of that in the future, so we don't lose all of that?
Yeah, so what they'll do is they'll give us a database backup file. And the plan is for Craig and I to create kind of a custom search function. So basically, what she's talking about is the, all the agendas and the minutes are going to come over. It's just the legislative items, the attachments, those type of things wouldn't come over into the software. However, we would have a database, we'd throw it onto our SQL server, and then we would create kind of a small search tool, basically, where you could do a keyword search and find all those. We would still retain all those documents, but we'd have them on our own server versus being migrated to the Peak server. So it's part of the agreement in the proposal, we're going to add in there that we would have our own backup file. They're going to use a backup file, that we'd just get the copy of that backup file, and we'd store it on site.
And then, Chris, do you have any concerns with that? I'm sure you were in, when they were talking about all this, and how that whole process would work, or not the processes, but be able to get to what you need to get to.
Yeah, we went through that, and Terry and I kind of talked about things. It is a money issue too, you know, but I think this will work, because we've done this before on our other system.
Yeah, and iQM2's website's going to be up for at least two years or however long we want it to keep up. So as far as getting to those MinuteTracks right now, they'll be able to utilize that for a couple of years until we feel comfortable that we can turn it off. But at the same time, we're going to have that backup file and create that search function. So getting those attachments and those individual agenda items hopefully shouldn't be an issue, because we'll be able to, we'll have all those items onsite. It's just a matter of how defined we want to create that search function.
And then after the conversion, Jeremy, in the Peak software, you will have all of that data will be in the Peak software, correct?
Just the agendas and the minutes and the meetings and stuff like that. The individual agenda items and attachments will be in a search functionality that we create. It's just the agendas, the meeting dates, basically the things that are listed here will be searched over to the Peak software, which will be some work to do, but it'll be put onto the public portal as well, so that people can see, okay, I want to see agendas and minutes from 10 years ago that'll still be available and things like that. It's just the agendas and minutes itself.
So even after you do the conversion, the Peak software doesn't handle the additional documents?
No. And that's, the other software we looked at was iLegistar, and that one was significantly more expensive. We're talking upwards of $20,000, $25,000 just for the initial setup, and then each year was between $8,000 and $9,000 a year. So that, and it's really meant for more bigger organizations, counties, like the city of Indianapolis, those type of, there's just so more functionality in there that we just aren't using currently.
So from just a meeting standpoint tonight, how are we going to get at those additional documents and that, that we're acting on tonight?
So, yeah, maybe the question is on future agendas, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so future agendas, everything will be managed through the new software. So in fact, it'll act very similarly to what you're receiving today. So agenda packets, you'll get an agenda or an agenda packet. Within the packet itself, each of the items will be clickable like they are now. So you'll get the green sheet, you'll get the corresponding attachments, all of that stuff will be, it'll seem seamless to you on the front end. In fact, all the trustees with their iPads, they'll get a new application called iLegislate, which will have the various agendas right into the app. And you'll be able to click through individual items without having to scroll through a PDF.
Right.
You'll be able to write notes to yourself, you'll be able to send correspondence to specific staff members on specific agenda items directly from the app, so you don't have to go between email and browser and things of that nature. So the application itself, the iLegislate app, is much more robust than the iQM2 app that you had before. The challenge is more of the previous agenda packets that were created, and it's more of an efficiency issue, so we're going to retain the data. So Peak will hold the minutes and the agendas from previous meetings years ago. It's the green sheets and the agenda packet information that we're going to have on a separate database. So like if Chris wanted to go back and say, you know, how did I prepare this green sheet?
My question was really referring to going forward, when we switch to Peak.
You guys.
Everything's going to be in Peak.
Yes, everything will be in Peak. In fact, it'll be much more efficient for the board, for staff, if we want to look at our history. We add a little bit of inefficiencies, because now we have to go between two databases to look at what we did previously.
Because I can say that I spent hours today trying to get through it. I literally, I literally for the prep for the meeting tonight, I could not properly prep, because I couldn't get at everything. I mean, I read through as much as I could find in that, but the software kept crashing.
Yeah, I think a lot has to do with the.
So the faster we get to this, happier I'm going to.
It's something we'll have to talk with staff. A lot of it has to do with the PDFs, and I think a lot of, no fault to Aaron or anything like that, but there's, some of the PDFs were in 24 by 36, and they're high-res. So if we can maybe set as precedent or something when those get sent to the agenda packets of maybe 11 by 16, or maybe reduce the PDF size, that'll help immensely, because this packet was 189, 200-some pages. And then those, some of these high-res PDFs are, you know, 64 meg's or whatever, so that's quite a big.
The app itself will be much, much more efficient for you, because you'll be able to itemize specific agenda items and view the attachments and the green sheets individually, so you don't have that file issue. For residents or the general public on our webpage, it'll have the agenda, much like we have now. But instead of uploading the entire packet, so this packet is 189 pages, it'll upload the agenda, and that might be two or three pages, but within that, each of them will be separate links using a cloud service, and so it'll expedite and speed that process up as well.
Is there any concern with us all on the cloud for security reasons, or is that?
I mean, that's currently what iQM2 is on right now. Technically, we don't house that data here. It's mostly all public record. The closed session stuff is all security protected, like it is right now. So technically, we retain, we own the data, but we just have, in terms, it's just stored at a different location. And really, the only proposal tonight is just to really use the cost to migrate that data from iQM2 to Peak. There's really no cost change to move to that software. There's no setup fees or anything like that. We'd actually be paying the same price as we do now. There is a small increase each year, but again, everything is stored on their servers, so we don't have to worry about applications or updates or anything like that. It's all web-based.
So I'll make a motion to approve the, moving forward with the software upgrade to Peak, and also including the data migration costs of the amount of $8,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and minutes software upgrade to Peak in the amount of $8,000. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. 10G, action on village hall video surveillance system upgrade. Jeremy?
All right, similar to this one, we're actually looking at upgrading our video surveillance system. The existing village hall camera system, a lot of it was put in in 2017 by Martin Systems. It was mostly furnished at that time by DOWL cameras and VR, DVR systems, which is basically the storage server that, where all that video data gets housed. However, in 1999, or I'm sorry, 2019, the National Defense Authorization Act was passed, which actually prohibits several Chinese-made video surveillance cameras to be used in the government buildings. So we're kind of in a little bit of a violation in that portion of it. Since these cameras are not NDAA compliant, Genetek, which is the system that we want to use, will not allow us to bring those cameras into their system. Also, at the same time, a couple months ago, Public asked, and village hall staff asked to place additional cameras inside and outside the building for some better coverage. Public Safety is also requesting longer retention rates on some of the cameras, especially in the evidence area. So staff met with the representatives from our Martin Systems and conducted a site survey. And what's projected or proposed is to basically replace any DOWL cameras with an existing, with non, or with NDAA compliant or access cameras. Bring the entire camera system into Genetek, and Genetek is a platform that we have our access control system, as well as our license plate reader cameras from the squads. So it's all going to be housed in one server. We're going to upgrade any exterior cameras, where some of them were either 4, 8 meg's to either 15 meg's or 4K, depending on the locations. There's a couple new interior cameras that we're looking at putting in. And then obviously, we're going to upgrade our NVR to one large stream vault option, which will provide longer retention. This project was tentatively listed as an ARPA-funded project in the 2023 process. So with that, I'll ask any questions.
We've been, we've been talking about this for a while, so.
We all know cameras are needed wherever you go in this area. You're finding cameras, and if we're well under what we should have, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't be upgrading and getting something that is recommended for the safety of everybody around here. And not only, cameras not only take care of our area, it takes care of, you know, somebody can be out in the bus stop here and having issues, and it focuses, you know, we get images from that. It's no different than your Ring Doorbell today. It brings stuff in from the road that may, you may need some whatever questions on it. So I don't see a problem with this at all. I think it's money well spent. If there's no other questions, I'm going to approve.
Now second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the village hall upgrade for surveillance system cameras for $74,125.20. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. 10H, 2023 light duty fleet purchase consideration. Ryan Rickert.
All right, thank you. As part of our 2023 approved budget, we had various different fleet vehicles in that budget, one being a 3/4-ton Parks truck, one being a 3/4-ton utility truck, a 1-ton dump truck. And then we also were made aware that approximately two weeks ago, that two of the trucks that we had committed to in 2022, Ram was not able to deliver those trucks in 2022. They actually oversold vehicles in 2022. So at that point in time, I reached out on December 2nd and sent out requests for quotes to various different vendors. The vendor this year that was awarded the state contract for state contract pricing for vehicles was E-Wol down in Oconomowoc. Sent it out to them, also various local vendors that you can see in the list there. I have requested that we receive those quotes back on December 16th, so that's this week Friday. The one thing that I do want to note, that we have been made aware from various vendors, that currently the only vendor that is taking orders on 3/4-ton and 1-ton trucks at this time is Ford. Their ordering window is open until January 13th, which is kind of a cutoff before our next board meeting. So what staff is looking to do is get some consideration from the board to see if we're able to review the quotes at a staff level that we receive from the various different vendors, see what's most cost feasible and what makes the most sense, and then execute those contracts with whatever is most advantageous to the village to get those fleet vehicles ordered for 2023. I can speak about supply chain issues for minutes on end, but I won't waste your time. I'm sure everybody's well aware of it. Fleet vehicles are not easy to come along, or just vehicles in general, as I'm sure many of you are aware. At that, at this time, I'll take any questions.
Ryan, what are they looking for delivery dates?
So if they're ordered through Ford, those are the only ones that the vendor could speak on, or they're hoping towards the end of quarter two, that we could get delivery of those trucks. Those are really the only ones that any of the vendors could speak on behalf of when we may see delivery.
I went out and checked a new one, six to nine months.
Right.
All I could do was laugh. It's ridiculous. Old Joe's got us by that one.
I don't have a problem on the trucks. You guys need them. We've had some fleet issues with, in the past where the trucks were beyond war out. We had to pay the junkyards to take them. So with that, I would recommend that the board approves, as opposed, for the recommendation for the trucks they're looking for.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve staff to execute contracts with vendors for the 2022-2023 light duty fleet vehicles not to exceed $268,000. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. 10I, consider discuss act on 2023 seasonal summer and LTE wage matrix. Joe?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. In your packet is an updated wage matrix for limited-term employees, seasonal summer staff, the like. This matrix also includes such positions as crossing guards, community service officers, as well as paid-on-call and paid-on-premise firefighters and paramedics for the Public Safety Department. This one-page matrix basically replaces what was once, I think, a 16-page document that had a different compensation wage for every single position. So in talking with staff, with our finance department, and then reviewing area-wide wage data for these types of positions, we felt it was appropriate to try to consolidate these positions into different pay classes that would complement our permanent part-time and full-time matrix that the board approved earlier in the fall. All told, the wages for each position on average is about a $3 increase over previous wages, and that is consistent with what we're seeing with area competition, in particular with our lifeguards. So that was one area that we were very focused on. The city of DePere, city of Green Bay have been very frequent and progressive in increasing their wages in order to attract and retain talent each summer for their various pools and aquatic centers. And we wanted to ensure that we were being competitive with their specific wages. These wages that are incorporated into this matrix, this was being worked on as we were completing our budget process for 2023, and these dollars are incorporated into the budget and can be accommodated. It's just, this is more or less a formal approval from the board to adopt this revised matrix, so that Parks and Rec and other departments, if they go out and advertise for positions, can advertise appropriately based on those approved wages. So with that, I'm sure Rex, myself, or Greg can answer any questions that you might have on the matrix.
I know that this is, you know, Rex has brought this up, especially with the lifeguards. There was a struggle throughout all of the municipalities with lifeguards, and luckily with some of these raises, we were able to staff our pool and our lake. So, yeah, it's well-needed.
What do you think, Rex? Is it going to be enough?
Never know.
Yeah, I know you're going to say, I don't really know, but what's your gut? Do you think you're going to be able to attract more people? What are you thinking?
Honestly, Jay, I don't know about attracting. We will be able to compete with the other businesses around the area, which we were not able to compete with before. I'm not even talking other municipalities, I'm talking anywhere up and down Oneida Street. So these wages at least bring us online with those. I think the nature of our job, hopefully, will sell a lot of those positions. My big thing is that it will keep the people here that are already here, so they don't look elsewhere. So I'm comfortable that that will happen with these.
Fair enough.
Rex, the two positions I saw, they're Level 1C, was the water exercise instructor, and then the cafe supervisor. I was surprised they weren't in Level 1D. It seems like they fit into that level in my mind a little bit better, just because of the responsibilities that they would have.
Some of their water safety instructors are contracted, Tracy, so they obviously would make a larger wage that way. So these are for some of the smaller classes that we do.
Okay. What about the cafe supervisor?
That is what, that wage is what our aquatic coordinator has said that she would like to see.
Okay.
But I appreciate the consideration.
I make a motion to approve the revised seasonal summer and LTE wage matrix as presented, effective January 1st of 2023.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the seasonal summer and LTE wage matrix as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten J, employee handbook update, holiday policy section 4.13 and general business and hours of operation, section 5.10 dash 1, point 1, excuse me. Joe.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, nothing more exciting than having a full, comprehensive rewrite of your employee handbook. You get approved one month, and then the next month you come back with a revision to add clarification. Um, that is essentially the case here. Our handbook has not effectively, or has not officially gone into effect. It won't until January 1st. Uh, so this is kind of a, just a preemptive measure to resolve some conflicts that, that may occur. The first one is under section 413, which is holidays. Nothing substantial is changing, uh, in relation to the number of holidays, the amount of time off, but just adding clarification as to what the actual compensation amount would be, uh, for given employees with the designated holidays. So with our proposed plan, we have eight proposed full-day holidays, and for a full-time employee, they would be paid at their regular rate of pay for the day of the holiday. That makes sense, and it's more common sense. But when we have situations where we have flexible schedules, or alternating schedules, or modified schedules over the course of the summer, it creates a little bit of a gray area or some cloudiness, uh, to that effect. And so what we want to state here in this policy is that our full-time employees are going to be basically paid the wage or wages that they would have earned in the event that we weren't closed. So as an example, with our summer modified hours, if we are working four nines and a four, and a holiday falls on a Friday, which is traditionally a four-hour day in those summer operating times, they would receive four hours of holiday pay. And they would still work their four nines Monday through Thursday. If it, if the holiday falls on a Monday over the course of the summer, they would have off all nine hours, they would be compensated for the nine hours that they were off, and they would work three nines and a four then to complete the week. So we just wanted to make sure that we are clear on the value of the hours. It's not based on a static amount, it's based on the schedule, and generally speaking, it's based on our hours of operation, and that's complementary to section 510. Beyond that, we may have situations where a full-time employee is specifically scheduled to not work on a day that's designated as a holiday. In our example in the handbook, maybe we have a public works employee that works a Tuesday-through-Saturday schedule, where Monday is the designated holiday. Um, now, in normal circumstances, say, well, they just miss out on that holiday. Under the policy, what we would suggest, and this is not a change, but just clarification, is that the employee would get Tuesday off then, and that would be their holiday. So they would still have a four-day work week, much like everyone else, it would just be that next designated holiday. The next section that needed some clarification is related to our permanent part-time employees. These are individuals working twenty or more hours a week, they can accrue time-off benefits. Uh, however, many of our part-time employees do not work a fixed schedule. In particular, our community service officers, our fire inspectors and the like, they work a variety of schedules each and every week. And so under this policy, it just says you will get the amount of holiday hours prorated based on your full-time equivalency. So if I'm working twenty hours a week, I'm half-time, so I get half the accrual, four hours, and then I can take those four hours either on the day of the holiday, if I normally work that day, or the day, uh, following the holiday, much like the full-time employees. Um, the way our handbook was written before, it was a little ambiguous, and so a part-time employee could assume that they might get a full day off, eight hours or seven and a half hours. That is not the case, it should be based on the prorated equivalency of their full-time status. And so we've clarified that, um, within the language. Uh, so that's the holiday section. The section 510 is related to our business hours of operation. Uh, what we wanted to do is provide clarification. Uh, the comment came up at, at the adoption meeting about work schedules, um, i- in relation in particular with Parks, Rec and Forestry. We wanted to make sure that it is understood that the community center itself will remain open and operate Monday through Friday, eight to four-thirty, that that will not be closing early on Fridays. Uh, that being a referendum-funded project and being open to the public, uh, we felt that it was important to identify that that building will be open so that staff working in that environment, uh, may be expected to work during that time. Um, Rex and his staff will work out, you know, the arrangements as how they're going to best staff that, but from an operational standpoint for the village, that facility will remain open, um, throughout the year, eight to five, uh, eight to four-thirty, Monday through Friday. Uh, so again, those are the clarification changes we wanted to present to you. Hopefully, um, there aren't any more changes for at least a year. Um, I, I would anticipate every year, if there are changes, they will come back probably in January or February, uh, as we do an annual review of our handbook to make sure that we maintain compliance with policy standard and law. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Move to approve the amendment of the village employee handbook as provided.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the, approve amending the village's employee handbook as provided. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten K, discussion and action on vacant trustee selection, interview and appointment of candidates for village trustee for ward seven and eight. This is the fun part, we made you sit through all of this meeting. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna do this alphabetically. Um, I have just a few quest, two questions actually for each candidate. Um, Chris Atkinson, you are first candidate, if you would come forward, please. Okay, please let the board know why you feel you are the most qualified candidate for the position of trustee for ward seven and eight and your involvement in the village.
Um, I have been on site plan for quite a few years with Gary. Um, I was actually thinking about that, it's got to be coming up on five years now. Um, so I come down to the village quite a bit, I know quite a few faces down here. Um, I also am a business owner, property owner of the community, um, multiple properties, not just my primary residence. I was looking to watch out for the village's best interest, for what's coming in business-wise, um, even residential development, stuff like that.
Okay. Um, what do you feel are the most important issues facing our village right now?
Same as last time I was sitting here, I, residential development is always going to be one of my major concerns. I feel if we get more residential development, a lot of our community will, um, improve, I guess would be a good word, not that it necessarily needs improving, but there are quite a few things I would like to see happen within the village.
Okay. Um, I do have, this is a special question for three of the candidates because they did, um, interview the last time. Um, I would just like to know, um, is there any special reason why you did not run after you interviewed and did not get the position and why you did not run the next time?
That's a great question. So I did not run because Mr. Krieger was elected to, or appointed to seven and eight. He has done a very, very good job. I had, have no complaints, I don't know that I would have been able to do any better job than him. So again, it's not necessarily about myself, it's about the community, and he's been doing a good job to represent the community. So I do thank you for that.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Can I just ask a quick one, Chris? So you said you'd like to see more residential development?
Yes.
And different types? Can you just expand on that a little bit, what you're thinking, or?
So we have quite a few of our friends that actually have moved out of the village for one simple reason, there is no such thing as a four-bedroom, three-bathroom house that comes up for sale. So there's a big, big gap. We have a lot of our old house that we had, um, ours was a bigger one, but it was a four-bedroom, one and a half bath, smaller, um, typical older Ashwabanon house. Nothing wrong with it, great starter house. But as everybody grows, your families grow, there's just, there's not a lot of options. We were, and I joke about this, but it's dead serious, I gave my wife a deadline to find a house in Ashwabanon or we were moving, because I was done with it, I needed more space. And she pulled it off, it happened, but otherwise, we were in everybody's same shoes. So for me, I would like to see what, I would like to see more potential renovations on some of the older, smaller houses, and maybe potentially an, an incentive to do that if it's viable or not, or maybe come up with alternative ways, which obviously there's lots of alternative ways to get people to move out of their houses and hope that somebody renovates them.
Thank you.
No problem.
Chris, if you are appointed, would you run for election when the elections come up for, uh, that side of the board?
Yes.
Okay, I, I messed up here a little bit. Could I have you state your name and address for the record?
Chris Atkinson, 1223 Gerhart Lane.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next candidate is... Oh, somebody goofed up my thing here. Oh, no. Uh, Brock. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Brock Herbst, 1649 Ladvina.
Okay. Could you please let the board know why you feel you are the most qualified candidate for the position of trustee for ward seven and eight and your involvement in the village?
Well, I don't know if I'm the most qualified, it looks like standing around, listening to a couple people, lot of good qualifications, got a lot, a lot of good candidates. Um, my qualifications, really just a regular dad, regular resident in the community, I don't own any businesses, have one house and that's it. Uh, my involvement in the community, uh, had, been on a couple nursery school board, uh, dance board, a lot of things with the school, uh, been heavily involved in that, coached for almost a decade, uh, been on the fire department for probably closer to a decade, uh, just always trying to be involved in the community.
Okay. Uh, what do you feel are the most important issues facing the village right now?
The face of the village is changing. Um, I think with, and I'm sure everybody can agree, uh, with the pandemic and everything else like that, that really exposed a lot of different things in the community, um, from school to, uh, who's in the community, everything else like that, and I think that we kind of need to look forward as to where we're going to bring the community. Uh, the issues, um, crime, that's obviously, we're seeing a lot more crime coming in, uh, you can look at some of the businesses in town, and they're, they're concerning. Uh, as a father, uh, I'm very concerned about some of the things that are happening in the community that I don't think, in my view, I haven't seen really being addressed.
Okay.
So.
Anybody have any questions for Brock?
Brock, what kind of things are you saying are happening that you're concerned about?
Well, the massage parlor right next to the school, I think that is a major concern of mine. Um, not saying they're not a legitimate business whatsoever, but, uh, common sense would say that there's probably going to be an issue with that at some point in time. I'm seeing a lot of vagrants in the community, a lot of, uh, transient people, and that's obviously a concern. If you don't have roots here, doesn't matter what you do, you do what you do and you move on.
Thank you.
Brock, one question, same as the last one. You intend to run for reelection when your time comes up as a, uh, a person to run again?
I'd like to. Uh, this is kind of a test run, see how this goes, see how government goes. Uh, again, I always like to be involved. Would I go for it? Yeah, why not?
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Brock.
All right, thank you.
Okay, our next candidate is Cal Curlin.
Hello.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Cal Curlin, 2321 Santa Barbara Drive, uh, Green Bay, 54313. Um, actually, I, I had prepared statement, and the first part of it answers your first question, and the second part kind of hits your second question.
Okay.
If that's good, I'll just go through that. Um, over the years, I've had, uh, several volunteer positions in different government activities, and just list through some of those, uh, currently, or just last year in fact, I was an election observer, uh, for the, down at the city of Green Bay for the past election. Um, a couple years back for a governor's election, I actually was in, on the reviewing of the ballots, uh, for that election. Um, prior years, Gary Drazicki, a state senator, I was his vice, or his treasurer for his reelection campaign. Uh, 2010, Mike Omiger appointed me to the LZ Lambo Committee to represent the village of Ashwabanon. Locally, I've been a past president and member of the Ashwabanon Business Association, I've been an ambassador for the Green Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a current board member of Brown County Sports Club and prior board member of Nicolay Rifle Club. Um, history myself, I've been in the village for about thirty-five years, uh, I feel it's my time to get back to the community. Ashwabanon's a wonderful place to live, has excellent amenities and services afforded to us. Um, I basically have conservative values and fiscal, I believe in fiscal responsibility, uh, but I also look forward to new opportunities. If we don't prepare for the future, I feel the future passes by to other communities. Some of the questions are things I wanted to see addressed. One, what's the next title town district or PAC? What's the next item that we need to look forward to for the future? Um, what are we doing about our aging, our aging community? What are we doing for them? Um, are we doing anything to attract younger demographics to this community? Um, last thing, what will visitors and future residents, ten years down the road, twenty years down the road, what would they be looking forward to come here? What will that be? How do we forward think to figure out what that would be? Um, in general, I'm a, a person that believes less government is more. I really enjoyed the discussion earlier about the streetlight. Yeah, maybe it's probably a good safety thing, but if the people don't want it, don't force it on them. I found that very interesting. That's in a nutshell. Oh, and I was one of those that ran last time, I didn't run for the seat very same reason, I thought Jay was doing a fine job, and it would have been an uphill battle, I didn't, I liked what he was doing, so I left it at that. And yes, I would re, run for reelection. Questions?
Answered my question.
Okay. Any other questions? I do have one. So when you said looking for the next title town, what, what did you mean by that?
Well, what, we have to be progressive in forward-thinking on what, what is going to be the next thing. Like now, uh, I think of Ashwabanon Bay with the food trucks. We've got all the, the food trucks there, that's a very popular thing now. Twenty years from now, are food trucks still going to be popular? What will be the next draw for the village? We need to be finding reasons not only get visitors come here, but residents. And back to my comment of, how do we attract younger residents? Because let's, like most communities, the communities are aging out. We're, we're getting an older population, we need different services for that older population to help them, but then we also need to bring in, what's going to bring in the next batch, the, the younger people? The kids that go away to college, are they going to come back to Ashwabanon, or are they going elsewhere? How do we get them to come back here?
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
Um, Kelly, just notice on your resume that you, your areas of expertise are team building, staff training, development, policy and procedure, and strategic planning and execution. How do you see those skills helping you as a village board member?
Um, the team building's the biggest one. I've had a real good success on bringing divergent views, not to agree necessarily, but to work together. I've had very good success with doing that. Basically, respect each other.
Looks like you have a lot of financial background as well. Have you worked with government at all in your financials, or been more private?
Other than when I, uh, did the treasurer for Gary Drazicki, which I would not advise anyone go for that position, that was a lot of work. Uh, but no other than that, I've been, I've been in finance, I've been a mortgage broker and banker for thirty-plus years. I had my own company actually over here on Oneida Street for about eight years, um, but it's all been in mortgage lending mostly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Cal.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next person is Drew Keel. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Drew Keel, 2308 Balsam Way. So as for the qualifications question, um, I come before you with a certain amount of qualifications, I sat on numerous committees with the city of Sun Prairie, which is one of the fastest-growing communities in the state of Wisconsin, uh, which they face many of the same issues that we face here in Ashwabanon, uh, so I'm no stranger to the workings of local government. Uh, additionally, I have experience in the workforce, uh, with affordable housing and multifamily development. Uh, did that for several years in the Madison area, working with stuff, uh, TIF, economic development, uh, both senior and... Did that for several years in the Madison area, working with stuff of TIF, economic development, both senior and workforce housing as well. As far as other background, I come with a finance background, degrees from some of the fine UW schools, as well as the professional side, dealing with credit analysis, letting to small and medium-sized businesses, as well as the insurance industry. And then, let's see. So as far as the most pressing issues with the village, that leads itself into, there's no secret here that there is a lack of affordable senior housing, which also leads to the lack of housing stock that we currently have. No one can move out of their existing homes. It pushes away new individuals such as myself and my wife when we recently relocated back to Ashwabanan after a couple of years. Nothing lives in isolation, all these problems that we kind of face in that area, it all works together. Leading more into that development can lead into more of those homes freeing up. And we can see newer, younger families move in, which are necessary to continue to move the tax base and keep the schools busy here in Ashwabanan. So I think that's probably one of the bigger pieces. And additionally, as myself, I am younger. I'm one of the ones that left for college, came back to Ashwabanan. I know the kind of services and amenities that I myself and similar families are looking for when we move back here.
Okay. And so you were one of the ones that interviewed the last time. Is there a special reason why you did not run?
Yes, so right around that election time, I just started a new job. So we were a little bit busy with that. We were still relatively fresh back in Ashwabanan after we moved back, so we were renovating the house, changing around a couple of things, fancying it up from the 1960s, 70s paneling in there and working hard on a lot of that stuff, so we decided just to focus on that. And Mr. Krieger did seem eminently qualified for the position, as he has proven, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah. You moved back here to Ashwabanan and you moved back here, why?
Ashwabanan is the village that raised me.
I don't want to use the word Ashwabanan. What brought you back here?
Village is a place with excellent services, a sense of community where people interact with each other civilly. I know everyone around here. I have lots of family in the area. It's a center now for what's going on in the Green Bay area. I mean, look at the title town districts and all that in the last bit. There's stuff going on that attracts a person of my age to this area.
Did a job bring you back here?
It did not. So we moved up here to be back closer to family and away from the Madison area, so we're not large city people. We're on the fine scale of here in the village and the greater Green Bay area.
Okay, I was listening to you and I thought maybe a job brought you back here. All right, well, that's good. I'm glad you're back here. Thank you.
Happy to be back.
You're going to... Are you going to be interested in being in the election when your time comes up?
Absolutely.
Very good.
Drew, can you just talk a little bit more about when you worked at Baker's Play, it looks like you did a lot with affordable housing and independent senior housing and stuff. Can you just expand on that a little bit, what you did and how familiar we are with that?
Yep, yeah. So when we were there, I worked as a housing market analyst. We did the market feasibility studies. So it's the document the developer presents with, are there enough individuals that would potentially move into it? Does it have the right rents, amenities, everything that fits in kind of with what the local market needs? We did studies for the individual developers that went to WIDA, dealt with those programs, know quite a few people that are working there now. We did some work with cities and municipalities as well. We prepared a study for the city of Fort Atkinson. The city had probably three or four open locations that they were looking to develop an RFP to attract developers in. So we conducted the study for them. It was basically, they can hand that to a developer and say, hey, we're ready for, you know, 120 units of workforce housing, senior housing, et cetera, in the area. We coordinated on stuff like TIF. Like I said, you can extend TIF zone by a year at the very end for an affordable housing fund. It's another incentive for a developer. Use it for other things inside the community as well. And that kind of led into where I was and pulled into those committees in Sun Prairie. So once you're on one, you tend to find your way onto several others and that's just how it is. But yeah, so plenty there in the developer world. So I know we worked on, there was a renovation of the property across from Ashwabanan High School. We took a part in that study there. We worked on the new development that's out near what used to be the Creamery, kind of the title town brewing area, those apartments. So experience with stuff in town as well.
So you've done quite a bit of work with municipalities and it sounds like, and you understand that and are comfortable with the financial end of it and...
Yeah, absolutely. So the inner workings of those finances are not fun to a lot of others, but I do enjoy them.
You finance people like Greg over there. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is Kevin Momarts. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Momarts, 5096 Sherwood Drive.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Nope, I was going to say, you know the drill here, so you know the questions.
The reason I'm here today is my philosophy is to give back. I was a paid-on-call firefighter, firebird, EMT for 21 years here in the village, did a lot of coaching, basketball, football, basketball. As time went by, I got busier and busier. Now is a good time for me to sit back and work for the village, work for my community, put out any kind of fires that happen throughout the boards. I want to be the face of that ward and just bring it to everybody else. My professional job, it's kind of firefighting, it's dealing with people, all kinds of issues. So I have that kind of mentality to get things together, get people together and work with people. I'm here for the long haul, so yes, I would go for reelection. I see the village getting older and older and I'm a lifetime resident. I went to schools here, raised my family here, they went to schools here. The other day, I was going down O'Naiter Street. When I grew up, I was on Casper Drive, I printed a return to very last house, so. Who remembers back in the early 70s and into the 80s, O'Naiter Street, there's nothing on O'Naiter Street. Look at it now, you know? I saw that build up, industrial park build up, brings in revenue. Now, what's for the future for Ashwabanan? How can you keep getting revenue? So I want to be part of that.
Okay. What do you feel are the most important issues facing the village right now?
You know, I kind of touched on it, the future. What does the future bring? A couple of things were discussed here today in the meeting. Another hotel going up, you know, taxes, revenue, room tax, all that, it's all great. We're going to run on our roof pretty soon here and then what, you know? So that's what I see.
Okay.
You know, we're talking about too many dollars for a bridge tonight. Okay, we don't have any extra income coming in because we're landlocked. Everything's, the land's built up. How do we deal with that?
Okay. Gary, are you going to ask your question?
You answered it.
Yep. I'm here for the long haul.
He walked right into it. Didn't have to ask him a thing.
Okay. Any questions?
Kevin, you were, are you maybe still there at production, working in production management?
Yes.
And you talk about budget and customer service. How are some of those skills that you learned through there going to help you, you feel, as a village board member?
Well, you know, basically, I set the budget. I have my wish list. Obviously, you're not going to get everything. You have your managing budget, which you pretty much know what it's going to be. And it's like, you have a budget, you have to figure out, we have X amount of dollars, how are we going to get there? We need to cut, we need, maybe we need to add over here. All those things that pop up all of a sudden, you got to have some income for that. It's just, it's a puzzle and you're always moving that puzzle around every little piece.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, and our final candidate is Joseph Richter. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. Joseph Richter. I reside at 2046 Autumn Leaves Circle.
Okay. Do you know the questions or would you like me to repeat them?
I do. That's a benefit of going last, so. I am relatively new in terms of a lot of the individuals that I've heard address the board before me. But I've lived in Ashwabanan for about five and a half years. But the reason I am here this evening is because I'm extremely proud to be a resident of the village of Ashwabanan. I grew up in Stevens Point, Wisconsin, went to school at UWSP, moved around the state for a few years before my wife and I got married. And originally, when we moved back to be closer to our families, we found our first home in Alloway. And it was a great little village. We spent about seven years there. And as our family was growing, we were looking at school districts and we were considering West DePere, DePere, Howard Swamaco. And really didn't even consider Ashwabanan because we didn't really think that there were new development or neighborhoods that we would be interested in. But thankfully, there were two houses on Autumn Leaves Circle that were for sale at the same time. The house that we purchased was actually not the one we were initially interested in. But I share that story because Ashwabanan at the time was kind of an afterthought for our family, not being from the area. But now, five and a half years later, when my folks come to visit us, I actually drive them around Ashwabanan, just beaming. Title town development is fantastic. We have three young children going there and feeling like we're a part of the community and knowing that it would be a long walk for us, but it's about a two-minute drive, is fantastic. My son plays baseball out of Schwabamey and the pride I have in showing my dad the baseball fields, talking about my experience growing up in Stevens Point and the pride he has. So I'm just extremely proud. This was not something that I was seeking out. But as I mentioned, we have three children and I've spent the last 10 years growing a family and establishing my career. So I've been in higher education for the last 15 years, most recently nine years at Northeast Wisconsin Technical College. And I am a student services administrator. So ironically, one of my chief responsibilities is advising our student senate, student government on the Green Bay campus. So I spend a lot of my time encouraging students to get involved at the college level, which I can tell you is a challenge. But I think some of those, for some of those personal reasons and pride and for the skills that I've developed over the last nine years in higher education, particularly getting people excited about being involved, I believe are skills that I could bring to this board.
Okay. Okay.
And if I could, just, I echo everything that has been said as far as the challenges. But as a younger person, having a younger family, I do believe that is one of the greater challenges that our community will face, particularly for young professionals. We have a lot of competition in the greater Green Bay area with the different towns and cities I mentioned earlier. So I think we have a great opportunity as a village. We know what's going well and I think we need to capitalize on those things. So I see it more of an opportunity. And Gary, I definitely would run whether I get this today or not. I understand that reelection...
I keep it simple.
Yeah. You'll see me here again, either way.
Okay. Any other questions?
So it sounds like you work with students and getting them to be involved in leadership and development. So is that part of the thing that triggered in your head for you to get involved in leadership?
Well, yes. So when I was doing my undergrad at Stevens Point, I did not get involved at all on campus. I did a lot of off-campus engagement. So the irony is that that's what I do for a career now. But I've been spending the last nine years encouraging students to get civically engaged and involved and get out and vote and do different, you know, volunteering opportunities, but I really haven't done that. And again, now personally and professionally, I really feel compelled to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for putting your information in and interviewing tonight. I did this almost eight, probably closer to 20 years ago. I did not get selected. So I did run the next time and I did win, but in between there, I was put on a committee and it was the Christmas Decoration Committee. So I started on the Christmas Decoration Committee and here I am 18 years later, the village president. So it, everybody pretty much said the same thing as far as Ashwabanan is a very unique place to be. And it is a very unique place whenever I go throughout the state and I represent Ashwabanan at events. And very proud to be in Ashwabanan. So I just want to thank everybody for being active and engaged and... Okay, I will have any discussion, any comments from the board?
I think it's just great to see so many candidates again. Like, there must be something with that ward. When Jay ran, too, there were seven or eight. And my ward had three or four maybe, and when Steve ran, he was one. So it's great that people want to get involved, so I guess really good to see. And encourage you to, even if you don't become the trustee, like Mary said, get involved with the community because you can always use people on different committees and groups and that gets your foot in the door a little bit.
Yeah, well, you know, committee involvement is important to understand how the village runs, what we do and stuff like that.
I, thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. I mean, it's... You all are very good candidates. There's no doubt about that. The one thing I would say that did stand out to me, that I wanted to point out in Chris's packet, he got some references within his constituents, his residents that are in that 7 and 8 ward and got recommendations from them, which I just commend you, Chris, for doing that. I think that that was a good thing to show the support that you had within those wards. The rest of the candidates, still all very good. It is great to see the passion that all of you have for Ashwabanan, like we all do. And it is a great community and that doesn't mean there isn't a lot of work to be done. There is a lot of work to be done. And for a group of people like yourself to be here, however this goes tonight, I would so highly recommend. There are always boards out there to be part of and to be able to take your passion and be able to put it in a different direction on a specific board. Like, okay, maybe not Christmas decorating like Mary did. Hey, guys, you know, I haven't seen your houses, so I don't know. But, you know, there are a lot of boards and things that I would highly recommend that you get involved with, as well as other things within the community.
Okay, I've been through this before. That whole north side of the board here is new. They were all appointed to the beginning. We went through this process of figuring out which one is the best and I want to compliment all of you. I think all of you did a nice job of presenting yourself for the couple of questions we have. Couple of things that I look at is how you address your address. Half of you's had Green Bay. You weren't interested in Ashwabanan. You were Green Bay addresses, living in Ashwabanan. The next thing I look at is who is involved in the village. And Chris has been involved for a number of years with us, along with his involvement in the village. So when I recommended somebody, I went on the idea of what qualifications they had to fit this board. In order to, in my opinion, in order to have qualifications to fit on this board, you should be on a committee somewhere, somehow, someplace. It's very easy. We are looking for people to be on boards or committees. I think it's important to learn the steps, as I did, being on the site plan committee for 99 years already. It's been a long time and I've learned from there that you learn about how this thing is operated. So in my opinion, Chris, you are the man that I would appoint. That doesn't mean he's on here forever. That means every one of you fellows have a chance to be elected. And you all know your areas and who lives in those areas. So if I could make a recommendation, I would move to appoint Chris for our appointed for the remainder of this term.
I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second for the recommendation of Chris Atkinson to be appointed to this board. One of the things I will say is, that did impress me with Chris having those recommendations from people in wards seven and eight, and then he had a letter, I believe, that he did bring forward also. So that was very good, in my opinion, so. And he was here at the last one also, so. Any other discussion on this?
Under discussion, I just want to say, when I look at, I have different things I look at too, like Gary does, I look at all of us sitting up here and what our skill bases are. We have an attorney on the end, we have a business owner, we have another business owner, you know, Jay's the jack-of-all-trades.
And a Christmas decoration person.
Yes. So when I look at that, I think of who can bring in something that we maybe don't have up here right now. And, you know, when I look at Drew's application, I mean, he's had lots of experience in a different community that's very similar to ours, that's a fast-growing community. He has a lot of financial background, and I think that's one thing, I mean, I'm not a financialist, that we don't have up here, that, you know, the financial end of it. So, you know, Chris is great, I think he's been involved, his wife is very involved in the community, and I have no concerns with him, but I think when I look at a board as a whole, I would like to see Drew as our new trustee.
Okay.
I kind of agree with you. I thought Drew's education and background was impressive.
Yes.
I will agree with that. But knowing Chris has been on the site plan committee and involved in a lot of things in the community along with his wife, I think it's a decent appointment. I want to use the word "appointment," doesn't mean he's here forever. You fellows all have a chance to apply for it through the election when that time comes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Chris Atkinson for the Ward Seven and Eight trustee to finish out the term. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Yep.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you. It's a cold seat right now, Chris, but a little warm up.
Yeah. This appointment does not happen until January one. I don't know that Chris will be in the office on January one to swear you in.
Are you going to be here, Chris?
The third. Chris will be here on the third. So, anyway, but we'll get ahold of you and let you know. And I really, truly do want to thank every one of you. I've been sitting in that seat, and it's not easy to sit there. It is, I'm very proud of our village in the fact that we have so many people who want to be part of our village. That makes me very proud, so. I thank you, and we'll see you January third, Chris. Okay, do we have any items for the next agenda? Okay, if you do, give the village a call. Number twelve, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabnon may convene into closed session pursuant to A, B, C, and D of item number twelve. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight-five parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardowski. Yes. Trustee Service.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yep.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yep.
Trustee Krieger.
Yep.
And trustee Flukie.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody, and we are going into closed session.
This conference is no longer being recorded.